We will call the February 9th Danby Select Board Meeting to order. Please rise and join me in pledge to the fire.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please call the roll?
Abbott.
Here.
Bender.
Here.
President.
Haynes.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Beth, would you read the procedure for remote access, please?
Sure. Remote access to select board meetings while not required by law is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Businesses conducted and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees in person or remote who wish to comment on an agenda action item when it is addressed in the course of the meeting should indicate such intention during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for remote attendee participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. People will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online host will alert the chair to the presence of remote questions or comments. Remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their devices and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes after which participant will be muted. General ground rules concerning decorum remains the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person. Namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. Procedures for use of the online platform and the above standards will be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting. And we have done so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, in our live audience this evening, we have Mr. and Mrs. Porter and Zach Fuller, and who do we have for our choice?
We have Doug White, Lauren Dever and Bill Richardson, Chris Hardaway and Terry Parker, Annette Smith, and somebody on a phone line.
I don't know who they are. Could that person identify themselves?
I asked them to in the chat, but I'm not sure a phone person always can get the chat.
Okay.
If they're on audio only, they may not have that, so.
Well, telephone person, if you can hear us, we appreciate knowing your name. Thank you, Beth. I have no variations to the agenda as printed. Does anybody have anything to add or subtract from it?
Is this different from what was posted?
There's agendas right there.
Well, I'm just saying, the things that are written in here. Oh, do I not have the correct ones? Correct, this is January 12th. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, I'm set.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to set the agenda, please.
I'll make a motion.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded, all those in favor of setting the agenda as printed, please say aye.
Aye.
At this time, we will have public comment.
And there's no one indicating the need for a public comment online?
No comment? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the select board meeting of January 12th, 2023, and also the meeting of January 20th, 2023.
I'll make the motion, we adopt them.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded, any corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the two sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our treasurer had nothing to report and is not with us this evening, so we will skip that and we will go on to the road commissioners' report.
We have mostly been plowing snow and in truck maintenance. Do we get a day or two of brush cutting in, probably?
We did get a couple days of brush cutting in between now and our last meeting and depending on the weather next week, we'll get a few more in.
Mostly been service items on the truck, few repairs. Everything's running pretty good at this point, I believe.
Yeah, so far, pretty good.
Currently.
Currently.
Uh, we did have to replace the alternator on the international truck yesterday because it quit working on the west side, but other than that, we're ready for tomorrow.
Yeah, few airlines and few normal maintenance items. But yeah, it's mostly these little crappy storms that we can't get a full day of anything else and other than being around to take care of an hour or two's worth of snow. So, quiet January, nothing bad. So, that's it.
Okay, I also put two other items under the road commissioners' report. We need a motion to adopt the town, road, and bridge standards and sign the certificate of complete, of compliance.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
And seconded, is there discussion? All those in favor of signing those two documents, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll pass this around for your signatures.
And I guess this is just to clarify, it's just a readoptment, that we have to re-adopt every year. They're the same standards as the town has been using.
And the next item is a discussion about procedures at the transfer station as they relate to stickers. We are just about out of our supply of stickers. Treasurer tells me we have enough to last us till somewhere in June, and that will be the end of this fiscal year. We've put some thought into it. A number of the neighboring towns use a punch card, and one of the things that the outside audit, the last two outside audits actually have both brought up, is that accountability should be better with the funds that are collected, and the accounting firm felt it was wiser to collect funds only in the office and not at the transfer station itself. Some of our surrounding towns use a punch card system, so you buy the punch card at the office and then all the attendant has to do is punch out the number of spaces around the edge of the card. So we currently have three different categories of disposal. We have the kitchen bag, which is two stickers, the 30 to 33 gallon bag, which is four stickers, and the construction size bag, which is eight stickers. So instead of putting stickers on a bag that basically fall off half the time anyway, you would just hand your card and he would punch out the appropriate number. So, as we move forward, I'm interested in hearing what your thoughts are on that.
I think to go with it too, like I got an example here, one of the guys I work with up in Maine, that town, you get a sticker that goes on the window of your vehicle, and it's renewed once a year. So it's a quick visual tool that you should be there putting your stuff. Maybe something to go with that.
I guess the only thing with that, and I think it's a great idea, and I guess as we move forward.
I'm just saying this.
Ninety percent of your vehicle's back into the.
Yeah.
So, that would require.
Buying a card, you should, they should be keeping track if you're a resident, if they're selling you a punch card.
Yeah, and I guess my only other question is, if somebody doesn't have a punch card at that time, they ran out, lost it, and they want to bring their garbage to the dump, what is our backup plan?
Well, I guess we're still gonna have to be able to take money at the, but not preferably.
Well, I mean, I think that's been the game plan right along, is that we're.
Well, they have to be told on Monday, you need to go to the office and get a card.
What are they gonna do with their garbage, leave it at your house still?
I'm sure it's not gonna bankrupt the town if.
I'm sure it's not gonna be.
So you're saying that we would.
But we're not gonna say, yeah, not again this week, yeah, not again next week.
Yeah, and that's the other thing is though, if your average guy can't get to the office when it's open, and, no, I'm just trying to throw out the scenarios for us working people.
And another thing that we've discussed in the past on, at least the sticker in the window idea, is a lot of people complained that, well, what if my wife is bringing the garbage this week? Do I have to buy two stickers, one for my truck, one for her truck? Cause that's been brought up in the past.
I mean, back to the sticker in the window, I like the idea, but it's not an enforceable idea because, like I said, the way we're laid out, we're not a drive-through area, which preferably someday we will be.
But what if, rather than a sticker that was actually affixed to the window, it was just some kind of a card that you put on your dashboard? So if you're taking the vehicle one.
If you got a buddy from Wallingford.
So, the next thing that I've always said about it is, I don't care what town you're coming from to dump garbage, if you're paying what it costs us to get rid of it.
Well, I don't think we charge what it costs us.
No, I don't think so either, but moving forward, we need to raise the prices, but I'd rather have somebody from Pollock stop here on their way to Rutland and throw their garbage in there than have them throw it on the side of the road.
Hmm, well, for sure, there's no doubt about that.
Yeah, no, I.
So I don't, personally, I don't want to tell everybody why.
Yeah, you can't dump here because you're not from Danby.
Well, I guess it's a slippery slope because we would be now the county transfer station if we make it.
Which we're here are.
I was just gonna say that, I know a lot of people that come here.
Do we, I mean, we're running quite a deficit.
Yeah, we lost something like $30,000, I believe, on.
In the.
I thought it was 65.
Oh, I could be wrong.
I think when we talked to Mount Tabor, we were at 65,000 is what we lost that year.
So we're subsidizing a lot?
Yes.
What are other towns getting per bag? I mean, I've heard that we're very.
The best thing to do would be to ask Mark Shea, because I want to say that the last I talked to him, it was $2.50 for a kitchen bag. For, you know, one of the small bags, I thought.
We're charging a dollar for it.
15 gallon or whatever they're gonna call it, something like that.
Right, I want to say he told me it was 250 for one of those bags, and then it was like $5 for 30 gallon, but I won't swear to that.
Yeah, I mean, this isn't a new topic. We've had these issues, you know, I'm gonna go back 30 years since we, and it's.
Ever since Danby started.
Yeah, and so, I mean, every, every time these discussions come up, you know, we try to, or at least all the previous boards have always tried to come up with the right approach, and, you know, we still, I don't think we're ever gonna make it a break even, but I, and I think one of our biggest problems is, if we make it too expensive, we're gonna be paying the road crew picking up garbage again inside the road because that was a major problem 30 years ago, is people were throwing it side the roads. And I don't want to force people who aren't gonna pay $8, $10 to get rid of their garbage, so we have to go out and spend 50 to pick it up.
No, there's definitely a fine line there, it's just trying to achieve the best balance, I guess.
And the accountability that concerns the lot of theirs.
Yeah, and I guess my, my question that we probably don't have an answer to is, how much money is actually being handled in the outside compared to the inside at this point?
We could find that out because he gives out money every.
Yeah, so, not saying that $50 a week, you know, it's, it's still all our, our town money, or, you know, or is it $1,000? I doubt it's $1,000, and, and I would sooner say it, and so, with that answer, that might help us make a decision on, is it?
Well, and also, you know, we're seeing an increase in bad behavior in a number of different ways, and I wouldn't want to see somebody quote-unquote robbing the transfer station attendant. You know, so if there's no money there, there's no reason to.
Well, Jug, you might have money on him anyways. I, so are we trying to get to the point of the punch cards tonight, or are we talking about completely eliminating cash tonight?
Yeah, it's an initial discussion, the punch cards is a starting place because we do have to make a decision along the way here, the next two months or so, about if we're gonna reorder more stickers.
And is it cheaper to go punch cards? I didn't hear if that was a.
We'll have to investigate it, but I believe so.
So, what is the downfalls to the punch cards? There would have to be a lot of interactions, which is sometimes tough, because if he's trying to compact in a busy point, to go around and punch people's tickets and they're not, that, at least when they got their stickers on there, they're kind of presenting that. That would be my only concern, is that Cliff has quite a bit going on at the, you know, when it's busy, and.
If we stay with the stickers, maybe we get three different stickers.
I was just thinking that.
To make it simpler, you know, you got one for a kitchen bag, one for a whatever bag, one for a huge bag, you know, where you got three different prices, you get three different stickers, and have a different color.
The other possibility could be that we just change the price on the stickers or using less stickers per bag.
Less stickers per.
Well, if it's taking eight stickers for a contractor bag, at a quick glance, if somebody grabs a bag and just throws it, Cliffy's gonna see a bunch of stickers on there, he doesn't know there's eight or six.
Right.
To where either, like Mike said, a different color for different prices, or we raise the price per sticker so you're not using as many.
Yeah, well, that's what I've thrown out, just coming up with a better way, to keep it as simple as possible.
And the thing is, in the cold weather, I put stickers on at my house, when I go to offload the garbage, the stickers are laying in the bed of my truck.
Yeah. I kinda like the idea of the different colors and go with a single sticker per bag. That's gonna cut the sticker usage way down.
And it's visual and it's fast, you know?
Hand raised from Annette Smith.
Uh-huh. Yes, Annette?
I'll give you my two cents, sounds like you ought to talk to Cliffy about the stickers and the punch card. I kinda like the idea of the punch card, I'm not a fan of the stickers, but I don't really care for the window sticker. I have vision problems, so I don't like things in my windshield, and, but, I really like the punch card idea, but I think, you know, the point about whether Cliffy is, you know, is that gonna cause problems for him, that's a good point, so. The other thing, Tom, you talked about, you know, people are working, they can't buy things. The town clerks are really good about mailing the stickers, I, you know, we could get, we could get a punch card by mail, no problem, so I don't, I don't think that's really an issue. But, you know, you can keep your punch card in the glove compartment, or you can have it so you can transfer it from one car to another, let's see if Cliffy would be okay with that, because your, you know, your idea of the, of taking it more time might, you know, he might not like it. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Any other comments?
So, I mean, I, I think probably, if we go to the punch cards, I, I don't know, I really can see that being an issue, but it's worth, it's worth at least going that direction and asking Cliffy if he thinks he can handle the punch card and dealing with the.
He's gonna have some patience with that, because they're gonna have.
Well, it's gonna slow down the Saturday morning.
It's gonna definitely make the traffic dip.
Um, and, and, and that's my only concern, is, I'm sure Cliff will be okay with whatever we ask him to do, I, I just don't want to make the line which now goes to the road, go down.
Well, the other thing would be having a helper for him that walks the line and does the punching, and he just supervises that they're putting the right things.
Know your expenses go up, so.
Exactly.
I mean, well, it's tough to do a test of it, you know, with the punch cards to see, you know.
I know for sure that two of our neighboring towns, Mount Tabor and Wallingford, both use punch cards, I'm not sure.
They both have the pretty, lot more streamlined setup than us.
Yeah, I know Wallingford's direct, they only got two or three.
And Mount Tabor's drive-through as well, and that keeps things.
Yeah, but Wallingford also has more than one person.
Yeah.
They got two or three that are there when I'm told.
I have a question about the sticker thing. How would you even know how many times, I mean, how many trips to the dump are you making on a sticker?
No, that's just to identify you as a Danby resident, the windshield sticker?
Oh, that's not paying for the.
That's nothing to do with the.
Okay, so the payment idea is really between, do you do a punch card or do the sticker on the bag? And I'm gonna be perfectly honest and say, I thought the stickers on the bag went away a long time ago, I always pay Cliffy right there with cash. I didn't even know I was supposed to still do that, so.
Well, right now, that's fine.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and a number of people do.
Okay.
And.
Cause the stickers always fell off.
Always, yeah.
Okay. For me. That's all.
And you'd be, you know, somewhat more green by using a punch card than stickers. Especially if you're putting eight of them on a bag.
So you're gonna put, the punch card is gonna contain how many?
It's gonna go around the edge, I'd have to look at Wallingford's or Mount Tabor's.
So there are different sections in that punch card for different sized bags?
No, it's just one punch, two punches, or three punches for your different sized bags. So the small bags, one punch, and the big bag is three punches.
So Wallingford and Mount Tabor both are using the punch card? I didn't know Mount Tabor was.
I guess what I'd like to see, if you're gonna look into pricing, would be to look at the cost of different colored stickers like Mike suggested for different pricing while you're looking into the punch cards. Because if the price isn't, if our, our cost isn't gonna be that much different, I think Mike's got a very good point with the different colored stickers.
That keeps it about as simple as you're gonna make it.
Right, and that would make.
So you still have a good traffic flow, it's not a big burden on the guy standing there watching.
Yep. The only thing I don't like about the colored ideas, it wasn't my idea.
Well, like you picked the colors, how's that?
I'll have to, I'll see if I can find out like what Wallingford charges too, just if we get some idea of what.
Yeah, I mean, and I guess some.
Maybe adjust our pricing.
Maybe we should actually find out, like, how many bags a week are we allegedly putting through the transfer station? And would a 10 cent increase make a difference, a 20, you know, so that we actually have an idea of what we've, you know, the number of stickers, so we can do it in a percent number? Because if we're gonna raise it by 5%, we would say that's basically a cost of living thing, but if it's gotta go up 230%, then we'd have to look at it, but we really don't know what our increase would have to be per bag to, to fund our, fund it closer to a break even, without knowing what we're selling. So I guess that's my question now, is, how many stickers have we actually, do we sell in a year? So what would have to be the increased cost and then to raise the extra $30,000? Or to generate more money, I should say, to get closer to break even? Now, in that, with a tangent of this, we also have our contract coming up, I believe, this year. So, I don't know if that's a good thing to have coming up or not, if trash costs are going up, or.
Contract for the compactors?
For our actual waste with Cosella.
And is that measured now by volume or weight?
By weight. So did we accomplish anything with this?
We got some different ideas a little minute.
Yeah, you know, we've got some questions to ask.
Some information for next time around.
Yeah, and I agree, we should, we should include Cliff in the conversation, because he may have some insight that we're not seeing on his side. And it may be good, bad, or indifferent to us, but we probably should.
No, he is the guy that's out there.
Yeah, and, and that's the thing, is, I don't want to make an assumption on his behalf, I do know, I've stood in there, parked in the Saturday morning line, and it can be long, and especially in the winter time when these guys are trying to get in and out as well, that if we could facilitate that, but that's a whole nother.
Yeah, we don't want to do anything that makes his job more difficult, it's a.
I will say though, that this year, most people have been fairly respectable about letting us get in and out without making us wait. So, I would like to say thank you to everybody that has let the trucks get into the transfer station, load sand.
Okay, any other points on that? Any old business? Any new business?
I just had a question. In the past, if we've had a fire department issue, we were able to utilize the town, town crew if they were not busy? If they're not out busy and stuff and we need the help, are we still able to call on them?
I guess my question is, what are you calling on them to do?
In the event, if we need, you know, manpower or something.
Now, this is firefighting.
Correct, but they wouldn't be put into.
Positions where they're not trained and giving a.
Correct, yes. In the past.
Would this be rescue operations still, like automobile accidents?
In the past, what has happened with the road crew is they've assisted in. In the past, what has happened with the road crew is they've assisted in traffic control, or going to houses to aid in getting people out of the houses, like if you had a large person had a heart attack or something, and you needed extra manpower, that's what's happened in the past, and I assume that's what you're looking for now.
Right, and, and along with that, I mean, if we're short on help, and, I mean, you guys are capable of handling the tankers, be able to truck water to us. But nothing would be put into, you know, what they're not trained to do. And it al, it also hinges on if there's a storm going on, we're not gonna yank them out from, or if they're involved into a busy, like you're cutting brush, you can't just all of a sudden stop doing that, you know, unless-
Typically, like in the wintertime, they, we usually assist anyways, you know, just as, because the roads, usually we need for all the emergency vehicles, so, you know, there's at least one or two guys there.
Right.
Um, and the towns' perspective, I think as long as they're not asked to do something that's outside of what they're safely able to do, that they should be able to assist for-
Okay, that would be great.
For the time, um, I, I-
Certainly seems logical to me.
Yeah, we're finding ourselves more and more shorthanded when things are going wrong.
I don't know how many of your firefighters work out of town, but at least we have three men that are within the-
Well, one of them's a trained fireman anyways.
Correct.
Yeah, so, I mean, yeah.
I mean, he's chief of the local department, so.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, is, is, he's trained for quite a few things, so that would be more than, you know, he, he would be able to help beyond, I, I just didn't want to see you putting a guy in SCBA and sending him into a field that was never done one before.
You're still certified, you can go.
Trial by fire.
Just run out of-
Literally.
I bet I could still pull one on.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I don't think it's, it's anything we need to bring up to a vote, I would just say that-
Well, that was my next question, do you, are you voting on it?
Um-
And I don't know.
Just getting consent, consent of what's, what the board's feeling about this. I think it's always been kind of an unofficial understanding, would be the best way to put it.
Well, then, considering what we've gone through with insurance audits and whatnot, does it make sense to have something on paper that says the select board authorized it?
Adopt a policy for emergency response for helping aid in the volunteer fire department.
Yeah.
I would say that right now, we have the yes, and these guys are more than happy to assist, it's not like they're not gonna help, right? Um, and we should probably discuss it further, and we can discuss more now, if, if we should adopt a policy for the road crew.
Well, I think it would be good if we adopted a policy for our insurance purposes, but also to establish it in the future that-
Yeah, so we're not lost with the next group that comes along.
So we're not lost in the future of, we don't have this ability.
Right. Yeah, and, and the thing is, the only thing that I kinda am stressing is, and not say that you guys are not all qualified to do ninety percent of the stuff, but when it becomes to insurance ends of it, that, I mean, what is it, three hundred hours now?
Yeah.
Of, of training, or something like that, and, and, you know, Randy obviously has it, but I, I, I don't wanna put ourselves in jeopardy on, on that end of it, I mean-
Correct, putting someone into a situation that they're not suited for or trained to do.
Especially under a mandate. They were told me to go in, because that, that takes the word volunteer out.
Yeah, also on that note too, is that when we do get a call, if we ask, when we ask someone like the town, we're commandeering them, that puts them under our insurance umbrella. So in that case, that, once we request that help, they become under-
So you would have to make an official request to the road foreman at the time-
Correct.
For assistance, and then that would, then you're sure about that with your insurance?
Yes.
That, then-
Yeah, that's a, what do they call it? It's a commandeering, at, at an official's, um-
Well, that makes our life a lot easier as far as a board, because, because my biggest concern is the fiasco with Vermont Leaks insurance scams, so, I, I, I didn't want one of our guys getting hurt and then not being covered.
Correct.
That's an important point, and I'm glad you brought that up.
Yep. And that falls anyone, I can say, okay, I need you to direct traffic, and you get hit by a car, you're fault under our insurance, because I commandeered you to do, you know, a certain task.
So I guess, in our policy though, we're gonna have to, just when we do adopt it, or if we adopt it, which I would say we prob, um, we're gonna have to make sure that the fire department, meaning whoever's the representative or chief at the time, makes an official request, you know, just meaning the phone call-
Right.
To the road foreman or, or road crew for the official, um-
Yeah, we're finding out that we really have to document all this stuff, right down to the point that, like on a medical call, we use our own vehicles instead of taking the trucks out, we have to write that down, and let that know that, um, that's a common practice. So when we leave, we are covered under the insurance of the fire department rather than our own.
Yep.
We know it's all sticky, sticky slope there with the insurance companies, so.
Well, as we've learned, that paper game, they use it to their benefit.
Yes.
Um, then I would say that as of now, that we'll go under the same as it then, they would help, and I would think that we should adopt a policy.
Absolutely.
I just think we should write it, and then we'll have to have the reading-
Well, I'll see if we, if there's a sample policy available.
Right.
And then we can tweak it to fit our needs.
Yep, that's good.
And I hear no objection from the board to continue this practice.
So why don't we just go, we just go one step further. I will make the motion that the road crew be available to the volunteer fire department as needed, and that we will be writing a policy in the future to establish this furthermore.
As a formality, I'll second that.
Okay, motion is made and seconded, is there discussion on it? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously. Is there any other new business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Motion is made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-nine.